I'm Tim Skoggins, Chairman of the Shasberry Select Board, and I am calling this meeting of the Shasberry Select Board to order at 6:30 on Monday, July 18th, 2016. First up, do any members of the board have a conflict of interest with anything appearing on the agenda this evening?
No. Out.
Next item of business, approval of minutes. We have minutes from our meeting on July 5th that were circulated. Is there a motion to approve?
Some move.
By Tony?
Second.
Seconded by Ken. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The minutes from July 5th are approved by a vote of 3-0-0. We have minutes from our special meeting on July 11th. Is there a motion to approve?
Some move.
Second.
Seconded by Ken. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those minutes from July 11th are approved. Okay. And then on July 5th, as a separate item, there were minutes from the Water Board meeting that started at 5:30 before a regular meeting. Motion to approve from Tony.
Second.
Seconded by Ken. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Minutes from the Water Board meeting of July 5th are approved, 3-0-0. Good thing I remembered my pen. Usually I have to borrow one from Mitch. He's my coffee dealer.
Right.
I'm gonna have to wrap myself in that.
Several in my pocket.
(laughing).
I don't know why I kept picking up my pocket.
Sign a paper piece of legislation.
Who gets the 10 cent big apple he's on?
Just a warrant?
Yes.
Okay. I have check warrant number two and the amount of $48,763.32.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve from Tony.
Check.
Seconded by Ken. Major items on this bill are $3,100 to Allied Auto Parks. I assume we needed truck parts?
Yeah, truck parts. Most of that was for the 550.
Was that all one truck, Dave, or?
Most of that was for the 550 to get it ready for the winter. It's the oldest truck in the fleet. Need things like the gas tank, needs an axle, things like that. Put it all on it, keep it running for quite some time. Otherwise, it's a no. Okay, truck.
Yep.
$1,200 to Bennington Sheriff, Bennington County Sheriff. $1,000 to Endine. Assume that's water testing?
Yeah, that's the annual. Actually, that's the fall water testing. The spring results will just happen.
$2,300 to Mountain Air Assessors. $1,800 to New England Municipal Resource Fixed Asset Module. That's the software you want for doing the inventory in NIMRIC. $2,500 to Perrin Recreations. Is that the clubhouse?
Yeah, well, no, that's a... How should I phrase this?
It was a stale check.
A stale check, thank you.
They must have misplaced and we were reissuing it.
And that's just from our community appropriations then?
Yes. It's from last year's.
Right.
They have received it for this year and they cashed this one. So this is a retroactive. It was well over a year old.
Oh, really? Okay.
Yeah.
All right. $6,400 for TAM. And $8,300 to William E. Daley. Well, there's more to Daley. There's a...
There's quite a few to Daley.
Yeah. A $3,100, a $6,200, and a $6,000 to Daley for all the summer projects.
A lot of that's chlorine and some gravel projects we had to do just to get the roads back up after some of the heavy rains. Some of the roads looked pretty bad. A lot of that went to Blueberry Hill. It's just more regular maintenance, more than projects.
What did we do on Blueberry Hill?
After that real big storm, was that two or three weeks ago now? The road really washed out. So we had to put in a lot of gravel and it wasn't fixing the problem. We were addressing it was making the road pass more.
Getting it back to the road?
Yeah, we only got hammered hard. Well, they made adjustments as I put this in.
Okay.
I don't know all the particulars of it while they were there, but it suffered a lot of damage. I don't know where that very small.
Okay.
Probably one of the worst.
That's a trouble to take at a road that's steep.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. It just runs any distance, UK album.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah. Okay.
Any more discussion on check warrant number two?
Nope.
All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Check warrant number two and the amount of $48,763.32 is approved by a vote of 3-0-0. Are there any announcements? Like, there ought to be an announcement. Are there any public comments? Sir, please come forward. Give us your name.
Good evening. My name's Michael Keane. I'm a resident of Dorset. I work at Southern Vermont College in Bennington. And I'm here sort of chasing a goal. And I was recommended I come by the State of Vermont. What I'm trying to do is encourage the State Agency of Transportation to review the speed limit on US Route 7 between Bennington and East Dorset, Super 7, not 7A, with the possible hopes of getting the speed limit raised maybe to 65 miles an hour. This started with a poll that I took on... You might be familiar with the group on Facebook called Manchester Marketplace. So I took a poll going back to April, which had about 230 respondents, of which only 31 felt it was a bad idea to raise the speed limit on Route 7. So based on that, I initiated a petition on change.org to the state. And I'd like to submit to you a copy of that petition that I sent off to the state. That's the petition. And actually, as of today, there's the 243 signatures on the petition site. You're happy with that? And after some correspondence with the state, they basically came back and said that they don't really have a mechanism for the general public to make such requests. And generally, such things would come from affected municipalities. So what I've taken to doing is I'm visiting each of the select boards up and down the North and South Shire here. And basically, what the state is looking for, not necessarily from every municipality, but the more the better, is some kind of written letter or request to have the state initiate an engineering study. So the final thing that I'd like to submit to you is basically the correspondence with the state, which is what they're asking for. So just in a nutshell, speed limits generally are set by engineers at what's known as the 85th percentile speed. It's basically how fast 85 out of 100 cars go on a typical road. And without any scientific data to prove it up, to back it up, I think most people would agree that the average speed on Route 7 is about 65. So, you know, barring any unseen circumstances, that would make the speed limit that's there a little oppressive and somewhat under justified. So I'm hoping to get the backing of each municipality along the corridor and hopefully have it looked at by engineers and with the eye towards possibly raising it. So that's why I'm here tonight, to ask for your assistance with that.
Yeah. What do you see as the benefits of doing that other than convenience?
Well, convenience, I think we also do a disservice to our tourists who come through the area or sometimes tag, possibly unfairly. I also think that there might even be a safety concern as well. What happens is, as I said, typically, people do go about 65 on that road. Occasionally, you run across somebody who's hesitant to break the law and actually goes 55. And what happens is you have more passing than you would normally. So anytime you've got passing on an undivided highway, you're increasing the risk of an accident or collision. So generally, getting all the traffic to flow at a uniform speed is probably a safer way to go.
Well, it certainly seems reasonable. We'll take it under advisement. We have a short board tonight, so we wouldn't want to act on something with that kind of statewide implications on just the three of us, but it seems like a reasonable idea.
I appreciate it. I thank you for your talk tonight.
Well, thanks for coming down.
Thank you.
Other public comments?
I did bring some pictures in last meeting of the site up there that Towns is going to purchase. I don't know if you still got them, but I did take a few more. And I read an article in the Rowan Herald last Saturday. The village went in and cleaned up an ice ore they got up there. And maybe there might be some way that Shasberry, if we're going to purchase that, could somehow clean it up and then, you know, take the cleanup cost off the purchase price.
Talking about the house that we're buying there?
The green one where you first go in?
Right, yeah. We're trying to buy that right now. We have agreed on a price. We're having some issues in clearing the title to buy it, but we're still hopeful that that's going to proceed. But the price has been agreed upon.
With the cleanup or without the cleanup? Or you're buying it just like it is?
We're buying it as is.
Okay.
Yeah. And it will be cleaned up.
Yeah, no, I was just... I didn't know you're buying it as is. I thought maybe up there, they used it and they cleaned it up and then they, you know, took it off in a lien portion against the property.
Yeah. I can guarantee you, we're not going to get any more money out of the people.
Yeah, no, no. I was just trying to get the cost basis down and get it cleaned up.
Yeah. Well, recall that that second property was, you know, we bought it or are in the process of buying it for $30,000. The one next door, we bought for $40,000 last year because it had a better house on it. So the one that we're buying now is actually a bargain for us already because all we're going to do is raise the houses once we buy it. So the quality of the house didn't matter. So I think we've done well with the price that we got for it. And in both cases, we paid what the appreciated value was.
Yeah, more than anything, I'd just like to see it cleaned up as soon as possible. To me, it looks terrible.
Oh, yeah. Couldn't agree with you more.
You know, if there was any way to get it done, that was all I was trying to do was with the article up there, cleaned it up right away and then, you know.
Yeah. As soon as we can close the deal on that, we've run into, like I say, a few hitches relative to the title search and the parties involved have not been real reactive in moving forward with that. But we're still expecting that it'll proceed. And as soon as it proceeds, yeah, one of the first things on our list is to clear all that out.
Yeah. And just in case things don't go good, you could read that article. They did it up there and it seemed to work quite well and they got it cleaned up right away.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Then just... I know they talked the site up there, they're going to check it for PFOAs.
We are currently in the process of testing the wells that we monitor every six months at the landfill.
A well. Same deal.
We're just doing one well? Okay. One of the several wells that we test every six months is being tested for PFOA even as we speak. We're expecting the results in at the end of the month.
And how long ago was it tested?
The water was just sampled last week.
Two weeks, you know.
Two weeks?
Yeah. I've got PFOA contaminated water, you know, on some of my properties. And boy, those tests come back slow. I'm talking, you know, months.
Yeah.
And then I did speak with CAT TV today. And they tell me that you still could get a copy of the meeting tape for permanent record if Shasberry wants it. They always used to do it. I'm not quite sure why they don't do it anymore.
Get a tape?
Yeah. You know, the meeting.
Well, the meetings end up on YouTube, so...
Yeah, well, a lot of people, if you come into this office and, you know, don't have any access, you could, you know, review the minutes of the meeting. And if you had a tape of the meeting here, you could actually watch it.
So you're suggesting we buy tapes for people that want it?
No, I'm suggesting they have a tape, go right in with the minutes. They always used to.
We don't have that.
A videotape?
We'd have to go up and find a VHS player and then get this converted. Anyone who wants to watch this could go to the local library and get assistance on logging onto a computer.
I still think there should be a permanent record right here in town right along with the minutes. They always did it before.
I know we got a cabinet of them buried over there that no one's ever going to look at. I know because I was curious and I opened it up when I first was sitting in zoning. I was like, what is this? Hundreds of them. And right now, since this technology's come in, anybody who wants to watch this can easily watch it anywhere they'd like with a little assistance if they need that. They can get that at the local library. Most libraries, all that I know of, have computers where you could go down and they show the library and we'll help you access it.
Okay. No, I still think it's a good idea to have it right here for the public. And then I did have Madoin do an estimate on part of the cost to resurface the apron over there on Quarry Drive.
Okay.
You know, I've asked for many years and I figured, you know, you might just well get an idea of what it's going to cost. To me, it's a reasonable price and it shouldn't be done.
All right. As I said before, that has been put on our list and we'll look at it with improvements for next year. We've got a full season this year.
And then I just... That 1994 calendar that I brought in, can I get that back?
I'll put that in the mail to you. I'll have that somewhere.
Okay. Thank you, Dave.
The thing you brought here and sent downstairs?
The newspaper-like thing that it had?
Yeah, it was downstairs first and then you wrote the meeting. I'll mail that back to you.
You what?
I'll mail that back to you.
You can't just run down and get it now?
I don't know where it is. I'm in the middle of a meeting.
Yeah, not right now.
I also have another thing to send back to you.
We'll get it back to you.
Okay.
Thank you, Ed. Any other public comments? Dina, what are you hiding back there for?
It was the only seat left.
(laughing). You just come to watch us in action?
No, I was reading that we were having a meeting today and that you were going to be discussing some items from Nammert Park.
Yes, we have park stuff coming up later.
I didn't know what's going on.
All right. Well, we'll get to that in just a few minutes.
Okay.
All right. Well, I know there are no other public comments because that's all of our public. So we can move on to the Treasurers Report.
It's me.
Melanie Dexter, welcome.
Hello. I did my interim report really late. Did you get it?
We're in the Dropbox room. I think that's right behind you. See?
Oh, there it is.
Magical technology.
It really does not tell you very much. It's right in the middle of the month. I say this every month. You can see there's... The Highway State Aid came in, a nice little chunk of change there. We got our tax pre-bait money. So we continue to be in very good shape on receipts, actually. I'm not going to have to take out any money on the line of credit probably for at least another month.
Okay.
Disbursements are not that big. So we're... I just need to keep an eye on that and everything's looking good.
Yeah. How big is the surplus going to be?
We will not know that. I believe Dave told you.
I have no figure, but I'm not going to say.
And we threw around a number last time and it's not going to be that much that different from that. But there's still some checks that need to hit. It can only... It can't get better at this point. It can only go down and so we don't want to overstate it. But we're going to... It's going to be in the neighborhood of what we said last time.
Yeah. And it's worth pointing out, as David keeps reminding me, that it's mostly highway expenses that came in under for personnel that we didn't have and for winter operations that we didn't need.
That's right.
Those excess funds have to stay and can't go to the general fund for other purposes. They have to be reapplied to highways.
Yeah, but I think we said that accounted for 80% of the variance.
Yeah, that's quite a big chunk of it.
Yeah.
And some things just didn't pan out. Some of the tractors were scrapped and the scrap market was hit rock bottom. There's no point in selling them. It was giving it away. So there's a few things.
So that will cut into the surplus?
Yeah. But in August, the end of August, when we close all this, pretty much everything will be done and then you'll have the final numbers. Because by then, the lot of this will be coming in a week or so and we'll be going for it.
I'm going to be out of the office next week. I'm having a surprise vacation. I didn't think I was going to get one this summer, but so I will be out of the office. If people need tax bills, they should go to Joan Fargo. She'll be covering that part of my job. And if people have payments, they can just put them in my box. I'm the only one with a key, so they're safe there.
And you're taking it with you on vacation?
And I take it with me on vacation. So they will wait there for you to come back.
Okay.
Enjoy your fun.
Oh, thank you. I will.
Where are you going?
Just going to Maine. It's a family thing with the rest of the state. Oliver Mount will be there with us.
That's right.
And we'll get along.
Massachusetts. Yeah.
And we don't have a grant list yet, so I can't set the tax rate, but that's something that is hanging over my head. And as soon as I've got a grant list, then I can do that.
Okay.
And then get going on the tax bills because I know that some treasurers have already sent them out, which is amazing to me, but we're not that far ahead of things. So that's hanging over my head, but we still got time on that.
Yeah. Well, I haven't heard anybody begging for their tax bill, have you?
No.
Okay. Good.
Go figure.
All right.
Any questions?
No.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Melanie.
Thank you.
Rod Foreman.
Rod Foreman is absent.
Were you expecting him?
We never got around to it because they were very shorthanded today. There was three of us, three of them, and I didn't see Steve towards the end of the day, so it's possible that after being out in the heat and rain and everything, he's not going to make it to me.
Okay.
Basically, what they're doing right now, though, is, as everyone knows, we've had a few serious rainstorms, which have created a lot of ruts in the road. We've corrected most of the large ones and as much as we can possibly do right now. We do have a need to cut back on that kind of repair right now as we have scheduling issues coming up with our paving contractors. All the work on Harvest Hills, Hewitt, and Perrin Acres has to be done before, I believe, mid-August because that's when they shut down the plant for the chip seal. So there's culverts and some side work that has to be done on Harvest Hills so they can get this going. And there's also, I forget the exact number, on East Road, at least six large culverts have to be replaced before that's paved. They want to get that in. They're hoping to kind of combine these two. So we're kind of on a crunch to get this work done. So I told Steve, other than ripping the slide out of Cleveland Park that we were basically ordered to by the insurance company, that these have to be priority projects. Once Bowden and Packham schedule this, we have to be ready. Otherwise, we're going to have a problem. And if we miss the chip seal date, we're not doing it until next year. So if there's a few roads out there, and I've gotten a couple calls, and there are parts of roads that could use some spot grading, and we'll get to that as quickly as we can. Our other problem is our summer worker is out. We don't know for how long with a non-work-related issue. So we're hoping that's short. Because he would have been the perfect one to send out, as he knows that every road in Tam would just go take care of this while they put the culverts in. So if your road has a few rough spots in it, we'll get to it as quick as we can. But with over 200,000 paving projects around the corner, we have to be ready for them. We have to get to work, Ellen. Other than that, that one's valid.
Any questions about the roads? Okay. Number nine is Brownell's Certificate of Location Approval. We had a special meeting last week to review the location approval for Salvage Yard for Brownells. And it was discussed that a few things have changed in that the state has been monitoring the water there and it decided that the water has remained good long enough that they don't feel any further testing is necessary. Brownell's no longer crushes cars there, so the main source of hazard, pollution hazard, which was fuel coming out of crushed cars, is no longer an issue there. And decided that... Also, the other issue is that there's another legislation, a piece of legislation that's passed in intervening years that specifically covers salvage yards. So Brownell's, in addition to being subject to the stormwater protection legislation, is now specifically inspected by the state as along with all salvage yards under the Salvage Yard Act, whatever it's called. And so we felt that it was no longer necessary for us to pile on as many local conditions onto the site approval. That was, as I say, discussed in our meeting last week. There was consensus on the board that we should proceed as agreed to at that meeting. David sent that document that we came up with to the attorney for review. It was reviewed with just a few minor changes. This email mentions those changes in condition number seven, which talks about junk motorcars, parts, and scraps shall be removed from the salvage yard no less than every two months. There was a phrase in there about crushed cars that was taken out since they're not crushing there anymore. Just a minor wording part in number eight. And we also added it to the front part in the findings when it mentions the Old Cook Property, just to say the Old Cook Property now owned by Brownell's, just as a clarification. And number nine, we didn't make any changes there. And number 14 just adds reference to the statute involving salvage yard operation and is a little more precise about thou shalt observe all applicable laws and court orders. And so that is here. If those changes are acceptable to the board, and again, they're just really minor wording changes.
What was the change in the Cook Property?
Only to say that, as was known, that the Cook Property now owned by the Brownell's.
Yeah. He could use it or don't?
We're not changing anything relative to the Cook Property. In this latest iteration, we're just changing the description. Instead of just calling it the Cook Property, we're reminding people whenever it's mentioned in this document that it belongs to Brownell's.
I think what Ken's getting to is in the original document, the 21 restrictions, those restrictions have been removed regarding parking in front of the fence and the used cars, things like that. Although the used cars still have to remain on the Brownell portion of that property because that's part of the court order. The wording that was changed here, when I wrote this up, I took the wording out of that court order and put it right in our findings. And Merrill was suggesting that we just put in to clarify also under the Brownell's ownership as it was when the court case was decided also, but it just clarifies it.
Right.
But we did drop the parts that we had talked about, about the employees being able to park and then customers having to park inside the fence.
Right.
That was dropped, just the conflicting things were left off.
Right. Because, I mean, he owns, you know, it seems only right to me that he already owned it.
Yeah. It's pretty much exactly what we agreed to with just these minor correctional changes that Merrill suggested.
Yeah, it remains the case that the stipulations say that the Cook Property cannot be used for the motor vehicle business, but we dropped the part that said that employees can't park there.
Yeah, because that was ours. The used car business still has to remain on the Brownell part, which is the majority of all the parts in the car anyway.
Right.
You need a motion?
Yeah. I would like a motion to approve the approval of location for Salvage Yard for Brownell's.
Second.
Seconded by Ken. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The approval of location for Salvage Yard for Brownell's is approved by a vote of 3-0-0. The approval of location for Salvage Yard for Brownell's is approved by a vote of three-zero-zero. Thank you. And item ten, Howard Park, Cleveland Park, playground rebuilds. David, you wanted to...
Yeah, we, we have, uh...
Give us an update on what?
Yep. As of today, all the equipment that needed to be removed for the insurance company has been removed from the two parks. Actually, all of the equipment has been removed from Cleveland Park. Um, soliciting bids from companies that provide engineer wood fiber to, uh, create a seventy-five by seventy-five square in Cleveland Park. It's fall protection zone, which the park's black and we have to have from insurance. Uh, we may move some of the equipment in the park to make it more rational as you look at it, but, uh, the big thing is to get the fall protection in, and then that park will be, uh, okay for now. Uh, we're gonna do that by digging down twelve to sixteen inches, put some fi- fabric on the bottom, and then we will just put the wood fiber on top. It'll be at ground level. Uh, Jay did it over at the school, so there's no trip hazard, which I thought was an interesting idea, because most of them have some kind of containment of it. You can always trip on it. So I actually liked his idea over there of it being leveled. Uh, then we have the issues at, uh, at Howard Park, and what we're going to do in consultation with the Magnificent Recreation Committee of the town is, uh, these, the insurance recommendation was to do the same kind of protection, fall protection for the two pieces of playground equipment there. They also consider our abandoned, pretty much pond, a attractive nuisance, as they put it, because it's so close to the playground. So what I want to do is sit down with Helen and Dean from the Recreation Committee and discuss relocating the entire playground, all two pieces, to the outfield by the, uh, pavilion, and making it, expanding this footprint somewhat so we could add in some newer pieces there, maybe next year if we have the money. Uh, that way, we would be taking it away from the, our attractive nuisance. Uh, and then I'll have to put a fence up over there, just a little thing. It's almost completely grown over. But I did look to restore it to Wetlands, and State Wetlands told me that we'd have to start by hiring a Wetlands consultant.
Right.
Who would then have to hire a Wetlands engineer, who would then have, I would have to go to the Army Corps of Engineers to get permits to basically pull the plug on this thing. So at that expense, I think it's better to just move the equipment further away and call it a day over there. Uh, it's been there forever without any known injury to me. I've never heard anyone mention anything ever happening there, but, uh, to be on the safety side, we'll just move a nicer playground towards the front. Uh, this stuff is very expensive, but if we make a big, we'll bank the box big enough now, and we can add stuff as we go on. The same with Cleveland. Seventy-five by seventy-five at Cleveland's gonna be too big for what we have.
Right.
But it'd be nice to have a space to add on, and, you know, just plan out a new piece a year until you have a full playground. The rest of it, uh, we have to change some nuts and bolts, but the rest of it is, is okay. Uh, the swing set at Howard has to be redone, so that may never go back up. It might just buy nowhere. In the long run, it might just be easier to run. You know, we'll go over that at the next meeting. It's, uh, it's only the merry, what, the merry-go-round, the swing set over there.
That's it.
And if it was closer to where, like, the tennis courts were, the pavilion, more people might actually use it than having to walk, park your car, walk all the way back to the far left corner over there. Uh, and we're gonna pull out this, this couple of fire pits over there, too. They're gonna pull that away.
Yeah, they have to go.
Yeah, there's no one should be doing stuff back there anyway. Uh, they'll just, just make a nicer location if you walk right into the park. And if kids are playing on the ball field, you'll be able to see all the kids playing. Uh, if there's nowhere else to put it, you can't put it up by soccer because it'll just be all the way. Uh, this is, I expect this to adjust the wood fiber alone, the two estimates so far, uh, are about seventy-five hundred just from material. Uh, I was thinking of hiring a company just to save time, but, uh, we certainly have the equipment, so I think we're just gonna dig it out ourselves. You know, just, we'll have to find, find a day to do it. Be dangerous things that they want removed are removed, so, uh, and like I said, we'll just pull up the stuff from Howard and store it and put it back when we can, which probably be fiscal eighteen. The other good news is the well is completed. Uh, it's fully operational, but unusable. We, we have to, we have to get two more water tests from the state. And so in another week, it's getting closer and closer. But I found out late today that, uh, we have to have two more tests from the state for our license, so...
Is that just because it's public or...?
Yeah, we have a public operating license now, which, which the park lacks.
But that's why you have to have...
That's why we have to do it, yeah. It's, it's protection for us when you invite the public in, start giving out water.
Yeah. Well, what do you figure out for a fence for that park?
I haven't really given it much thought yet. There isn't gonna be much of a fence because really, the, the, it's all grown in, except for this one little area.
If it's not used, it'll tell itself it is.
And that's what I want to do. I just want it to grow in and have...
As long as we don't have a bureaucrat to help that.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're suggest, it's being suggested we put a fence just over the part that's not overgrown?
Yeah, yeah. And, and just...
Let's figure out how to get, get it to overgrow.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's why the fence is, no one has spent a lot of money. This is just a temporary...
It's a fertilizer for the cactails.
And yeah, you want the cactails to come up, and it, you know, you get a good ten-foot buffer zone with all this stuff going. I mean, done with it. These things are all over the state, real ones, not this one, you know?
Mm-hmm.
And that's why I thought it would be easy to get rid of it because it's not real.
Not wetland.
Well, if that, if that doesn't have a flow to it, and the gaseous stuff get in there, and the wildlife, it'll, it'll take care of itself after, you'd think.
Yeah, yeah, I think so.
Gotta clear them right now.
I think, uh, because I asked Walt to, to no longer mow anywhere near the area. Just back off and don't cut as close as even is now. Just let's put some distance between us and it. It's never coming back to what it was.
Yeah, well, I was just wondering if you were talking about a chain link fence or...
No, 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 no.
So that yellow or orange steel fence?
Yeah. No, just, just something temporary.
Yeah.
Just to keep that one area closed off. And the other, the important thing where we come to really compliance is if you remove the thing that's attracting people there, then you can walk into a pond in about every couple miles down everywhere in the state, so, I mean...
Yeah, if nobody's going back there to play on the...
Yeah. If you're putting toys back there to play with, you're causing a problem.
Yeah.
So we get rid of those, and we're not inviting anybody back there. Get rid of the barbecue pits. No one's being invited back there.
Right.
You know, so, uh, you know, your kid could wander anywhere under the ponds, so I think we'll be good with that. I think it would've been easier just to dig a hole in there and let it drain out, but apparently I'm wrong.
See, now, if you hadn't asked anybody, you've gone up there with the back, going half an hour. The water been gone. Didn't we get a fine for half a million dollars?
Yeah, yeah. On your own property, you might get away with that. The town would not get away with that.
Okay.
But a lot of this, we'll talk, yes.
Do we have the UV system on it?
Yeah, everything's on. Everything, the UV system's on it, and, uh, it has more tanks than I could ever believe, but we're gonna get some mighty pure water out of us whenever we get it on. You know, but, uh, it's a nice system, but it's fully licensed and, uh, oh, and we talked about a water fountain earlier because we didn't really have the money to do that, but, uh, uh, we do have the money because we saved an awful lot last year. So instead of waiting, I was working away to fiscal eighteen, but, uh, we could probably get a water fountain. The water fountain's about twenty-five, three thousand dollars installed, so maybe we'll just, uh, do that now and get a water fountain in.
You'll have, you'll have one where you can drain in the water and everything, right?
Yeah, well, what we're gonna have to do in the winter because one of the tanks, uh, can't be drained, so, or can't be left drained, because it has the drying tank, so what you have to do is, we'll have to have frost come back. There's a way of, of pumping everything out, and then you put it in a non-toxic, uh, uh, antifreeze, thank you, uh, inside, and then they can come back in the spring and clean that out again. It's a standard thing for a system like this, uh, because we're certainly not heating that building during the winter. So, uh, it'll take a little work, but, uh, the system will be good by next year. It'll be very good. And it pumps a lot of water. Yeah, it has a lot of water pressure, so...
Yeah, I think we should go ahead and put the, the fountain in this year. It'll be at the end of the season, but at least we'll be there at the beginning of the season next year.
Yeah, okay, I'll go ahead and, and get one. We'll get a good one, and, uh, like I said, the basic price is about twenty-five hundred for a good exterior water fountain, so install for, uh, a couple hundred dollars or something to hook it up. Uh, because there used to be some on the outside, but they got whacked off.
Yeah.
Uh, but this one will be somewhat substantial, and, uh, there'll also be a camera pointed at it, so, uh, if, if you go at it, we're going to go at you, so...
Is there any way we could build a box or something for protection around it? Because the other one got vandalized up there. It got smashed all to hell.
Well, no, we can't really without having to have someone take it on and off all the time, but they like...
Well, no, I was thinking for the end of the season.
Oh, for the, for the wintertime?
Yeah.
Uh, actually, I'm thinking of trying to devise ways so the cameras can run during the wintertime, uh, because I think it, it, in law, I was thinking long-term, it's something we've talked about in the rec committee, too, is trying to up the utilization of the park during the winter. Uh, we've talked about, uh, plowing so that people could get in there and maybe cross-country ski and, and snowshoe and things like that. I mean, we have this twenty-five acre park that, you know, we don't plow.
Right.
It wouldn't take that much to plow, and, uh, maybe we could do something then, you know? I guess something we've been talking about in the committee, and, uh, it'd be a nice, nice way to utilize the park during the winter. We'll see.
Can you, uh, give us some options? Because, I mean, I think there is a, a trade-off worth considering between a five-hundred-dollar fountain that might get vandalized every few years and a twenty-five-hundred-dollar fountain that somebody could still drive their truck into if they wanted to.
Yeah.
Bad enough.
Yeah, uh...
Because I know, when I looked at it a few years ago, um, you can get, you know, a metal thing that sticks out of the door, like was, out of the wall that was vandalized before for around five hundred dollars, or you can get...
Yeah.
You know, something that's made out of concrete, you know, I mean, it looks like, um, terrazzo stone kind of thing that's supposedly vandal-proof.
They haven't made it...
Twenty-five-hundred dollars.
Yeah, nothing's vandal-proof.
They haven't made it yet.
And so, you know, I mean, the, the thing with the stone, if somebody stood out there at night with, uh, a sledgehammer, they could break it up if they wanted to, which is probably what they did to the five-hundred-dollar one, to knock it off the wall, so...
Yeah, the five-hundred-dollar one, uh, because we had looked at those, too. Uh, we can go either way. We, we'll, because we had looked at these, so we'll look at them again and bring them up for, for the next meeting.
You had brought, you had brought that up already.
Yeah, yeah.
Pretty, but you said it was twenty-five-hundred, too.
It was twenty-five-hundred dollars, yeah. Decent fountain, it's twenty-five-hundred.
I know exactly what you're looking at, yeah.
It's basically an inverted spigot that you can put out there for, for cheap, and that can get whacked off, and we'll still have the person on camera and, uh, and hopefully be able to prosecute if any of the damages are...
Yeah.
Either way, you know, either way, yeah, we can go through five for the price of one, you know? If, if we need to, or we could put up two. So we could have multiple, multiple faucets, you know? So, yeah, there are things to look at. We'll, we'll look at it, and we'll come back to the next meeting with some prices. Because by the time we do the next water test and send it off, it'll be two weeks before we get it back anyway, so...
Mm-hmm.
Unfortunately. But once this is all done, we'll have a good water system for the next twenty-five weeks.
We'll have water in the park.
Oh, yeah, great.
Water in the park. Seems like an obvious thing, but we've had to work at it.
We could turn the pot into a fountain.
Yeah, we have our own source over there.
Think you need any permits for that?
Yeah.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. All right. Any more comments on parks?
Correct.
All right, good.
We're having our meeting this Friday.
This Friday.
Yeah, ten AM, if anybody's interested.
Good.
Where?
Here.
Here.
Oh, here.
We should, we should all go up and stare at our new, very expensive water system. Okay, yeah, ten AM Friday here, the rec committee.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, eleven is our, uh, standard placeholder on the schedule for the proposed, uh, town garage. I don't have anything specifically for open meeting. I do want to, uh, talk about some of the negotiations that are going on in private and executive session later on, uh, relative to the, the purchase of Five Ten North Road. Number twelve, sidewalk project, corner of seven A and Church.
Okay, the, uh, bids are out as of today. Uh, they're on, they're not online here. There's a message online here. The bids can be, uh, it explains how to get a copy of the bid package. You do have to be on the approved list by B Trans to bid for this project. This is federal money involved in it. Uh, but online and at, at, um, Bid Systems and on the town's website, you can get information to, uh, follow the link to where you can get bid sets. Uh, they are due by August eighth at noon, all completed bids, uh, when they will be opened, and then we hope to award bid, uh, at the following select board meeting, which I believe is August fifteenth. On July twenty-seventh, uh, ten AM, there's a non-mandatory site visit with the engineers from KAS and, uh, myself. Uh, so it's out there. There's also a request for proposals to be the construction inspector, which is a separate, uh, bid in the construction. It'll be someone that the town will hire to supervise and the project for the town and inspect it, all the way materials being used.
Basically clerk of the works?
Uh, basically, but they like construction inspector now. But essentially, yes, the clerk of the works. Uh, and that's a separate proposal than, than the construction bid. And then you can find that all online and on Fund Paid For.
Is there a completion date on it or no?
December twentieth, two thousand and sixteen.
This fall.
The last day.
This fall, we will have a sidewalk. By golly.
Okay.
I'm not going to Las Vegas, I'm bad at it.
I'm gonna say the same thing.
It's in the bag, guaranteed.
Yeah, okay.
Nothing can go wrong at this point.
Uh-huh.
We do need two selectmen, uh, to be here for the formal opening of those bids, uh, at noon on August eighth. I can be here. Can any one of you guys be here? One of you would be the easiest, and we don't have to warn a meeting, but...
Right.
Because nothing will be decided. What's gonna happen is KAS is gonna provide a bid recording sheet, and they'll just open the bids and record out how much each bid is.
Monday at noon?
Noon.
I don't see the reason I can't be here.
Okay, I know you've always gotta get coverage at home when you do it.
Yeah. So, may I make a reminder? I, I don't have my book with me, but I, so long as safe, it's okay.
All right.
Let me know if we are gonna show up this Sunday after one in special meeting.
All right.
Okay.
All right, I'll remind, uh, Tony, see if he can make it, and then if not, Ken, I'll, I'll ask you to, yeah, to be here. Elm Street, speed limit, speed limit change.
Okay, I just wanna put this in here to let people know that we're, we're looking at this. Uh, the gentleman was just mentioning the eighth percentile, which is by far the best way of doing a speed limit for a road, uh, is on a practical matter, not, not something that can be done on Elm Street. Uh, I did spend about three and a half hours over there waiting for cars, which is been all I did. Uh, so I estimated by the amount of cars I saw that would take close to forty hours to actually do a valid survey. So we're gonna move into the, uh, the aspects of the road, the radius of the turns, the steepness, sightlines, and, uh, reaction time of people, uh, to make the change to twenty-five. If you do it, one simple way of doing it is just drive the road and see when you start tilting. Not, not recommended, but, uh, it is actually in the, in the book, but we rarely ever did that. Yeah, the, the road has a number of, uh, of issues with it as you come down the hill from Grand View. Uh, you're accelerating towards a, a very, uh, quick turn that has very poor sight distance, and even at, at thirty-five, you would far pass whatever object it was in your viewpoint if you couldn't swing over. If there was a car coming this way, there'd be no, there's no out. The road itself during its whole course is no more than twenty feet wide. Uh, in fact, when I was there doing part of it, uh, Green Mountain Power showed up to start tagging where they're moving all their telephone poles back because they keep getting knocked. I think mostly by our cows, but they keep getting knocked. But, uh, they're moving their telephone poles back. So it goes to show there the narrowness of the road. So we, we placed a couple of signs. One has to be moved again. But, uh, we're replacing the signs. Coming up from White, from, uh, White Creek, we'll have an S-turn sign, and going down is a right turn, the right curve sign. There won't be a left curve sign because it's a very mild... be a left curve sign, because it's a very mild curve, the second curve as you're going down towards West Creek, West Mountain. White Creek, too many roads, towards White Creek. But twenty-five is, is very reasonable and defensible speed limit for the street. Now, I already had mentioned about maybe carrying that through a land, land would be much more difficult, because you have a cluster of housing at Dunham and Elm and Harvest Hills and Elm, but from Grand View going back to sixty-seven, there's only a couple of houses, it's a straight road, and if you put a road like that at twenty-five, everyone's going to speed, and people are going to start passing the people doing twenty-five, and it causes a problem. If you're going twenty-five coming down Elm, you're going to see the men in front of you, and you're going to, you know, you're going to wait, you're not going to pass the person, because of course none of it's marked, and of course the wild card that makes Elm easier too, is someone could be parked on Elm, because there's no restrictions anywhere on it, so I, I think it's, it's, won't be difficult to get that written up, and should it be challenged, I, I think just a common sense approach to it would be good enough. Most roads do have to have a better count, but the state allows a way of in actual physical car counts when the volume's so low. And the other thing with testing is I know people said, well, between these hours, you know, commuter hours, but really, you're not supposed to do these during that time, you're not supposed to do it on curves either, because you're not getting true speed of the road, but the physical characteristics alone should be enough. So I'm hoping to have it written up by the next meeting, so we can start the procedure, because there's three meetings, it has to be brought up formally, then it can be adopted, and then people can petition if they don't like it, I think it's five percent of the population, not population, the registered voters, so, this whole process will probably be October before it's actually in place, but we're, we're good, we're moving along on it.
So, as David was pointing out to me today, the, the state requires that we do traffic study, car counting if it's practical, just calculations or studying the, the road situation in either case, but it is this board that decides whether or not that speed limit is changed.
So, yeah, so I'll have more for the next meeting.
Okay.
Which takes us to the town administrator's report.
Which I've reported about most everything. There's a lot of things going on, but they're all in process, so things are in different stages of beginning or completing. A lot of the activity is just getting the roads ready for construction, should go pretty quickly, once it's all together.
Okay. Is there any other business?
I got them.
Okay. Action items, I'm going to back up a little bit, because I don't remember doing this at our last meeting, so, going back to seven fifteen, during our water board meeting, we needed a copy of the Bennington water regs that we're incorporating.
North Bennington.
North Bennington water regs that we're incorporating. Jim sent me a PDF, which was digital, but it's not editable, it's basically a collection of photographs.
Yeah, he was sending you a scan, yeah.
So we may have to work harder at that, may have to go to North Bennington's attorney to get that in.
Yeah, I asked him to, to check, check with their attorney, because he, maybe he has it on a PDF, and we could then edit.
Somebody's got it.
Somebody, but we, we don't have it, we just have to scan hers.
It started out somewhere as a Word document. Lawyers may be reluctant to let, let their, their paid writings out as Word documents, but somewhere we've got to have something we can edit, so that we can incorporate our local regs into it. And Jim is going to talk with the town treasurer, I said, I actually meant the town tax collector, to see about possibly starting a foreclosure proceeding about one of the properties we talked about that is way behind on their water bill and shows no sign of movement. Then we also talked about, as Mr. Coy brought up, looking at how his, fixing his road can fit into next year's project, that's on the list, next year's projects, which is on the list, and David was going to generate estimate on park safety improvements. Sounds like we've talked, we've done most of it, and we're looking at maybe fifteen thousand on material?
About seven thousand on material.
Each park, right?
No, we're not, we're not going to do Howard this year.
Oh, okay.
Because we only have the two pieces of equipment. We might as well take time with committee, save some money, and make a plan, and put in a new, when we build the playground, have, have a plan to exactly what we're going to do with it. But Cleveland, we need to go on to right away, so that'll use up seven to eight, nine thousand dollars depending.
So we don't have immediate recommendation, well, we do have the fall zone recommendations at Howard Park, too, they're right.
We are, we're going to pull those right out, because they're also the attractive nuisance to the park.
So we're just going to take them out and park them?
We'll just take them out, store them back here.
Okay.
Until we come up with a plan and a design, and I just don't want to plop them down somewhere else and look at them in six months and go, why did we leave them there? You know, we'll just put them aside, winter's coming up, winter's coming up, it's ninety degrees now, but, thinking ahead, you know, we, we should take our time and, even if we have to wait to the beginning of the next fiscal year, build a nice playground, and we'd be in good shape, you know, but Cleveland can't wait, Cleveland has to be done. So seven to nine thousand dollars for that, which we don't have an option.
Yep.
It's not, it's not an optional repair, it's a mandatory repair.
Okay. And then the only one I came up with tonight was just communicating on, it's going to be here on the eighth to open that, that sidewalk bid.
Which reminds me, I'm not going to be here from the fourth to the fifteenth, I'll be back, leave after the next meeting on the fourth, and then I'll be back on the fifteenth for that meeting.
Okay.
And I'm always online anyway, so, because I'll be coordinating with KAS on the sidewalk as well, because we can't let any time go by.
Okay.
Too much time's gone by in this already, I mean, it's, it's out there now, so, and another thing, any questions, it's a nice part, any questions on any of this are directed towards the engineers at KAS. Any bidder has any questions, anything, Joseph Kirin at KAS is the person who answers, so there's no...
Your brother?
Yeah, 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 no, no relation, you don't run into him often, but it's funny, Joe Kirin's on the other end of this project.
The Kirin curse?
Yeah, that's one of the things, it's a bill.
No, we can't blame you, this project was cursed before, for years before you got here. Okay. If there's nothing else, then I would take a motion to go into executive session, session to talk about the real estate purchase that we're negotiating at five-ten North Road, and also to talk about personnel review for the town administrator.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.